...as far as council, Steve Rhodes, Mayor Wendell Stavey, Don Clay, Clay Cole, Mr. David Munt, who is with Safe Bill, and Mr. Joe Bridges. And at this time, I would like to introduce Joe and ask if you have any opening comments and then the same thing for Mr. Munt. But, or we can start in the other direction if you'd like.
I thank y'all for, you know, doing this. I didn't know this was an option or know anything about a workday, you know, if it's possible, so I appreciate you laying off of that up and it gives us good opportunity to discuss things and how to look at your angles and views and whatnot and appreciate, you know, people coming out as well, so I hope it's a good meeting, good stuff.
Great, thanks Joe. Hi, Mr. Munt, please, if you would, a little bit of your background and qualifications, if you don't mind.
I'm David Munt, I'm a building official. I work for Safe Bill. They're a company that's, their corporate offices are in Colorado. We serve right at 27 municipalities and counties in the state of Georgia. We serve in six other states as well. We have probably no less than 160 employees working for us at very different stages in their career. We are a private owned company, we're not public. I've been in this business right at 32 years. Prior to that, I was, I grew up in construction with my family and we built several things. You may have been around when Hartsfield Airport was Hartsfield Airport and had the clamshell by Route where my father built that. My father also built the CNS Bank there in Hayfield, right where it's not there anymore, the highway took it down. It was right there at Central Avenue and I-75. He also built, which is no longer in service anymore, the reactor at Georgia Tech. Those are some of the few things that, as growing up, I was involved with as well as he was. My experience is at various levels, residential, commercial, industrial. When I came on to Safe Bill, we acquired the contract down at the Keita Plant and I did all the inspections at the Keita Plant. What my experience is, is I'm considered what they call a master code profession. I have all the certifications that require what that says, and that's about 22 or 23 certifications. Other than that, I'm just a regular old contractor.
Good job. Thank you David, appreciate it. Thank you, good Joe, we'll come back to you and state your position, your needs, your wants, just what was yours?
Sure. I think, you know, last meeting, when we were discussing in the public comments, you know, you guys said, hey, this is really not the forum, this is not the place for that. And that's when Clay said, let's do a work session. And that was, was based on me asking the city to allow, you know, this building and the library to be utilized, bathrooms to be utilized to solve the issues that are at hand, with no bathrooms in those buildings that would serve the purpose of bathrooms to, you know, employees and patients and so on.
Okay, and at this time then, we'll go back and just...
Well, I, let's just cut the case and, and let me pose a direct question to David. In order to stay in compliance with our current state or whatever rules that we're under, with the existing facilities that we have, which is, there's a ba, single bathroom, I'd like to that right ago, in both the buildings that he owns, the store, the whole thing, and the whole post office. Then we have this facility here and we have the library that has the bathroom. With those four existing facilities, is there any way to utilize those in any kind of way that would meet the business requirement for his businesses if they were able to utilize any of those?
There was stated in a memo to y'all that each business is required to have a facility. They are not required to have separate facilities because they don't meet the occupancy requirement. What I also stated was, is that in lieu of putting in separate facilities in each one of the buildings, they could have a central facility which could be located in the old post office building and make it handicapped accessible.
But, I mean, but I'm saying, with what we have right now, without any kind of modification, would it be possible?
No.
No, so something's got to be done. What we have now is not usable to meet this criteria, so no matter what we do, something's got to be modified to, to be in compliance. So, I think the next thing is, what, of the options that would be available in order to allow the businesses to be in compliance, what can you say would be the minimum modifications and where would be necessary?
Well, the minimum would be, you put in, like I said, a centralized toilet facility, men's and women's, because of the mix of all the opportunities all together and both being handicapped accessible. You could probably get away with one toilet in each, one vanity in each. With the men's, you'd probably have to have a urinal. The other part of that would be that each one of the facilities would need to put either in a, well, if they don't have any plumbing, so they would have to put in bottled water or you would have to have a facility, a bathroom to be able for them to have a drink of water.
And hot water, so.
And that's in one location?
One area.
Wherever we chose, whatever works best, but in one location, we'd have to have outlets.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
It's open.
Yeah, okay, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to be confrontational, but I do, I do have questions and I've read a lot of the codes and I've been studying up on this and I have, that's why I was telling Donna, I said, you know, I want the attorney to be here so he can take those to the legal standpoint and say, you know, that this, maybe there's, maybe there's a point here, maybe there's not, or whatever, but anyway, David, all right. So utilizing these buildings and bathrooms to satisfy the need of the ordinance of having bathrooms to those employees and patients and so on, these bathrooms here are not up to code?
No, they, they are up to code, but what I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, these are not accessible.
Why, why are they not?
24/7, they're not accessible 24/7.
How, how do you know that?
Well, what time do you open?
I'm here at night, but there's also renters here pretty much every day, there's classes here and they can't, you can't just walk in while somebody's paying for a class.
Right, but it, but it is possible that, it is...
That's up to them, not up to me to say.
Exactly, exactly, so that's my, that's my point. You know, you guys have that authority to make this available and accessible.
Not when we already have classes here every day that, that we still want to be open.
It is possible, is what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm not saying, you, you have to make choices. Do you want to rent it or do you want to provide it for services of the town, you know, in the fashion of, of that after? That's, that's all, I'm just, you know, when we say things and we say things as matter of fact and then we refer to an official, you know, I just want to make sure we all on the same page here, that, you know, there, there's certain things that you, you guys as a government choose to do and is within your power to do certain things according to, you know, the state of Georgia and the constitution, the home rule state. There are many things that we can do and it's, you're not choosing to do them, it's kind of what I'm trying to make.
Right, but what it says is, and David corrected your wrong, it says that all hours that those businesses are open, a bathroom has to be available.
Where, where does it say that?
I don't know if it says it to that effect, it just says that they're required.
Required.
They're just required.
Okay.
For each one of the facilities.
Okay, so, so we're, so we need an attorney here to make a decision on it, because nobody in this room knows the answer to that exact question, am I, am I correct?
Yeah.
I certainly don't know.
I just posted they were required, for each one of the facilities.
So we have them here?
No, I was at the store, it's open. Let's take five. Open primary, Sunday and Sunday.
Yes, sir.
All right, this building is not available for them at that time, nor is allowed.
Why, why?
Because we have a lineage of other people and we're not going to allow, we are not going to allow the public to try.
I don't think that's the issue, we just want to know, is this a viable solution? If these were open 24 hours a day, would this facility meet the requirement of the businesses? I, I understand that, I'm asking, would these existing facilities meet the requirement for the businesses to be open? If they were free to come and go, would they?
Probably not, but, because it's a separate facility.
Now, whether it's a viable solution, that's totally different than whether we would agree to do it, that's totally different. I just want to establish whether they would meet the criteria.
It's, it's a separate facility and it's sized according to this facility.
What I'm looking at right here, it says plumbing and this is the Georgia Code and under Code 503.3, it says, "Location of employees' toilet facilities. Toilet facilities shall have access from within the employee's working area. An required toilet facility shall be located no more than one story above, one story up." Now, it goes on with an exception, which I think you quoted at one point, Joe. "Our facilities that are required for employees in storage structures or kiosks, which are located in adjacent structures under the same ownership, not the ownership of the city, or of same ownership, lease or control shall not exceed 500 feet." So it says that it should be...
Just, just, I'm just trying to make sure I'm referencing, what is the, what's the section?
Chapter 5, Plumbing Facilities and Furniture Requirements.
Of which?
International Property Maintenance Code. And it's section, paragraph 503, that is, 3, Location of Employees' Toilets.
Yes, yes, sir.
David, I'm quoting something from him, I'm reading right from the book here.
Employees' Facilities, a minimum of one water closet for one lavatory and one drinking facility shall be available. Drinking facilities can be bottled water or whatever. Public facilities, public toilet facilities shall be maintained and safe, sanitary and in working condition in accordance with the International Plumbing Code, except for periodic maintenance or cleaning, public access, and use shall be provided to the facilities at all kinds of period occupancy of the premises.
That's, you stated from 502.5, you referenced that.
Um, I see that. The, you know, we, we can stay here long, you know, going, hashing back over, you know, the laws or the codes and stuff, though I, I want some clarification if we can, on, when you say building codes, you know, there's two ways to interpret this, building a noun or a verb, you know, and most codes, are they not for construction, alteration, remodeling, you know, are they not from that standpoint?
All, all codes are for the health, safety, welfare of everyone. Okay, does that cover it?
No, my question is...
It, it does have something to do with construction, existing buildings, as well as safe occupancy, okay? It all goes down through the process, so health, safety and welfare is everybody's concern here.
And, and in your opinion, my buildings are not safe?
As they are right now? They're, they're not up to code, no.
I didn't ask you, you know, if they're not safe.
I can't, I can't determine whether they're safe or not because I haven't been in them.
Well, that's what you were trying to say, is, you know, you're...
Health, safety and welfare.
All right, so when you're, you know, they're, they're, within the codes, there's a, there's a hierarchy of how International Property Maintenance Code comes down, you can't have a plumbing code if you don't have a building, correct? So there, there's a hierarchy there, am I, am I correct? Starts with a building code and then you got electric code, plumbing code, and then, and so, so it guides you as to how to inspect and interpret certain things, okay? If, the way I understand it is, there are specific codes and specific protocols to address situations such as existing buildings, such as historic buildings.
That's why we have a property maintenance code.
Okay, so, under, under the Property Maintenance Code with an existing building, do you, do you not, is there, is there nothing to address, in, in your opinion, nothing to address historic buildings?
To my knowledge that they're not historic.
Okay, to your knowledge, now, to the town of Sharpsburg and the council, the mayor, are those buildings historic, in your opinion?
They're in the Historic Ovalt district, but they have not been put on the National Registers of Historic Building, but...
They won't allow that.
Right, now, to get back to, go a little bit further.
Wait, wait a minute.
Go ahead.
Are they or are they not, in your opinion, historic or not?
If, if they're in the...
I'm asking the mayor if they're historic or not.
You have to address it to the mayor and council.
Oh, I'm sorry, council.
Right.
Keith, Celine, Clay, I mean, anybody could...
Are they old buildings? Yes.
I'm here to be on.
And, and that's kind of where, I, I would love to have your attorney to say, you know, hey, you guys in the comprehensive plan of 2006 have gone at length to describe historic building, historic structures, the historic architectural vernacular, over and over and over, okay? And you're not willing to say to me, to my face, that these are historic buildings?
I will tell you to your face, whether they are or they are not, they still have to come up to these regulations as far as safety is concerned, and I have that here when you get through what you're saying.
Oh, no, no, go ahead. Can I ask a question? What is the definition of historic? Does it have to be a build, does it have to be on a register with the National Historic Society to be considered a historic building, or is there any other definition?
Yes, and if you consider that district over there, historic history, and you have criteria for it to be maintained and developed or whatever, yes, that can be considered historic. On the other hand, it doesn't matter its age, it doesn't matter condition or anything else. You want to preserve that piece of property in your historic area, you have to do it to the minimum standards of these codes, which are the minimum that's written.
So none other whether it was considered historic or not, it still would have to be covered, yeah.
Didn't we try to get all that on historic one time?
Mr. Bridges, where do you have that?
Because I thought we had like that lady coming from the tribe, tribe, and she was going over all the different things about getting us declared historical area.
We stopped it because the, the owners didn't want, didn't want to be on the historic register.
The reason was why, yeah?
They wanted, um, adhere to the building codes. They, I mean, when they redid the buildings or such, they didn't want to have to meet those higher standards of their historic reservation.
And they're getting what I'm wrong, but if you go into the historic registry, anything you do to that building has to be under the approval and guidance and inspection of the historic.
Right, which would make sense, I mean, if it is going to be, seemingly it would add value to the property if it was, if it was required.
It's a lot of grand, I mean, a lot of big expense to adhere to those rules versus not having, because if you want to go and put a light bulb in an area that's not lighted, you couldn't do that without going to them and getting approval, so there's, there's a lot of regulations that people don't want to deal with, and that's why they don't want to be, in some cases, owned historically.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I researched this and I, and I would like, for Mr. Munt, to look through his books over there and see that the building codes, international building codes top, top rung, okay? All right, you go down, you've quoted the International Property Maintenance Codes, all right? Within those codes, within, within that, they have actually stated in chapter 1, Scope and Administration, just number 102-6, historic, historic buildings, the provisions of this code shall be, not be mandatory for existing buildings or structures designated as historic buildings. When such buildings or structures are judged by the code official to be safe in the public interest of health, safety and welfare. Okay, that's your, that's your public official, okay? I see you smiling, so he, so he's got total authority, okay? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Now, this, this saying fell over here, okay? International Property Maintenance Code, Scope and Administration, chapter 1 is largely concerned with maintaining due process of law and enforcement of property maintenance criteria contained in the body of code. Only through careful observation and administrative provisions can building official reasonably expect and demonstrate that equal protection under the law has been provided. Okay, so that's, that's International Property Maintenance Code, okay? You also, you also reference, all right, back up, when, when I asked you, and asked Donna, I got to explain to my siblings, I explained to my mom, why, show me, tell me, lay it out, why I can't rent these buildings, because of bathrooms, show me specifically. You gave me occupational tax code, you gave me a building construction code, you gave me property maintenance, International Property Maintenance Code and plumbing code, okay? So International Property Maintenance Code already acknowledges historic buildings, okay? International Plumbing Code, 102.6, Historic Buildings, same, same thing is stated, provisions code related to construction operation, repair and large restoration, relocation of moving of buildings or structures shall not be mandatory for existing buildings or structures identified and classified by the state or local jurisdiction as historic. Y'all, y'all would be considered a local jurisdiction, correct? Okay? When such buildings or structures are judged, code official to be safe in the public interest of health, safety, welfare, regarding any proposed construction, operation, repair, large restoration, relocation of moving of buildings. So, so those two, those two codes acknowledge historic buildings.
Sum up if you will, in your own words, what you just said, please.
They're historic and you have the authority not to have to make, you don't have to, the code's not mandatory. That's, that's, that's the way I read it. I mean, I can read it again, and I can...
No, I'm not, it's, it's, it's state law, these are all adopted by state law.
Georgia Code, Title 8, Buildings and Housing, Chapter 2, Standard requirements for construction operation, etc., of buildings and other structures, Article 3, Application of Building and Viable Edutests to Existing Buildings, 8-2-201, Purpose and Applicability, excuse me, of Article, is the purpose of this article to encourage sensitivity, or sensitive rehabilitation, restoration, stabilization, preservation of existing buildings throughout the state and to encourage the preservation of buildings and structures deemed to be historic in total or in part, provided have such rehabilitation and preservation efforts should provide for the upgrading of safety features of the building structure provided at practical level to save the public surrounding property. As further purposes, this article to provide guidance regarding acceptable alternative solutions and to stimulate enforcement authorities to utilize alternative compliance concepts wherever practical permit the continued use of existing buildings and structures without overly restrictive financial burdens on owners or occupants.
And it, and it said there, back up just a sentence or two and tell you exactly what it said.
All right. What do you...
It said, it says providing guidance regarding acceptable alternative solutions. I think we've done that. I don't, I don't know of anything else I haven't done. Now, it's, it may not be acceptable to you, Mr. Bridges, but it's acceptable to me and the council, and that, and that's where I get my guidance is, you know, is from this code and my experience. Now, it also goes back to reasonable, and I don't know what reasonable means, but I've been in the court of law and I don't want to have to answer that again, okay? So I'm on probably the most conservative side of this.
These are...
If, if I have, any of our people coming to this town to do trade, if I have these fine folks here coming to do this trade in this, in this fine city, they need to be safe regardless, and they need to have public facilities to go, go to bathroom and, or wash their hands, or whatever they might want to do. That's all the city is saying at this point. I know what the regulations are, I've been doing this for about 32 years, like I said earlier, and I, and I believe, you know, your interpretation of the code is nowhere close to what ten building officials will say, okay?
All right, to your point, being conservative, is, is that where, I just handed you an email that, this, this was your, let's see, Clay was talking about using this alternate approach to the, or I was talking to Clay, I was talking with the council about an alternate approach, use, utilizing the library and reciting. He said, I'll check it out with the mayor, check it out with the code guy, and these, these are three alternative solutions, correct? So he laid out three ways to bring the buildings into compliance. Each building can have its own facility, handicap compliant restroom, toilet, sink, water fountain, on the outside, unisex, bottled water, all right, you can't use a central facility that serves all buildings. It has to be within 200 feet of the buildings that are served. Facility will need a men's, women's restroom, each with handicap compliant toilet, sink. It will also need a water fountain. This facility will have to be open to the public during the hours when the, the hours your businesses are open, or operating too. All right, now where, where did you get the 200 feet?
The reason why I put the restriction at 200 feet, and I can do that according to what you said earlier, the topography here in the city doesn't allow people to go up and downhill very easily.
Why, why, why is it, why is it not allowed to people, I don't understand that.
A person that's in a walker or, or blind, they don't know where to go, okay? A person that's in a wheelchair, coming down this facility, coming down this hill right here is not acceptable.
So you're saying, the city of Sharpsburg liable for that hill and that slope and that grade?
I'm just using good common sense, like the code asked me to do.
I wish we all could do, yes, I would love.
And all, all, all the city's asking you to do is provide facilities in each one of these facilities or provide a central facility... or provide a central facility that will service those areas equitably. That's it.
Okay. So, the two hundred feet comes from the slope and the grade?
The topography of the city, yes.
Okay. The library, to my knowledge, is pretty well maybe within ten feet plus or minus elevation of those buildings.
Take the library off the table. We're not, first off, we're not going to open that library during all the business hours. Stores are open for people to walk in there with all their computers and books and everything. That's not gonna happen.
Wendell, I think we're just trying to establish what would be usable, whether it would be viable and approved by the council is another matter, really. So, let's, let's look at every solution.
He probably does.
Well, I see that. Let's look at every solution and see if they can, any of this will meet the criteria, and then it'll be up to the council to debate it.
To use that facility is up to the council and the mayor.
But, I mean, it's a single bathroom, so it would, would it, it wouldn't be in compliance without modification, would it?
Right, you would need two facilities, female and male.
So, even if we're gonna use that because of the topography, it would have to be modified to meet the criteria to serve the business.
Um, you know, one thing, looking at, talking to the Department of Community Affairs, who sorta is not really an oversight, as I found out, but sort of a.
Big advisory, thanks.
Advisor, thank you. The codes, the way I understand it, you know, they're, they're permissive codes and mandatory codes.
Yep.
And the International Property Maintenance Code is a permissive code or a mandatory code?
It's a permissive code.
Okay, meaning?
Meaning the cities or the counties can adopt it or not. It's not a mandatory code. It's, it's whether or not they choose to adopt it and enforce it.
And, um, you know, there's also the International Existing Building Code that is a permissive code. And that might be something to look at. Do you think that would help the situation if they adopted that?
I don't, I don't see any help in it, no.
Even, even looking at the historic nature?
What the existing building code is, is what it does. It gives you an idea of what was done fifty, sixty, seventy-five years ago and the theory behind it, and does it, does it continue to work today? Yes, in most cases. Not completely in most cases. It's, it's theory. That's what this is.
You can tell, well organized on top of the, the, um, the, it's, it's my understanding that they actually, in the existing building code, if I can find my notes, they actually reference the, the fact that there could be buildings without bathrooms.
Yes, they could be. There are buildings out there without bathrooms, as you well know.
Absolutely. And it appears that under the historic designation, then you could, you could be exempt from some of the, some of the more stringent codes.
No, the code says that if it's impossible for you to alter the facility to allow full bathrooms or anything like that, whatever alteration it might be, if it's impossible because of the configuration, the type construction, the aesthetics or whatever. No, it could be exempt, yes, but that comes from somebody higher than me.
But, but it references not as in, I mean, it doesn't, you don't have to take it to that degree. You can take it to the degree that if it would take away from the historic character or nature of the building.
That's what it said.
Okay, okay.
Well, I have a question there, 'cause when you say take away from the historic nature of the building, by appearance, we might all say that they look historic, and they do. But who's defining them as historic? We don't have a land registry, right?
But it says, um, structures deemed historic in total or in part, and it also said as deemed by local jurisdiction, which.
Which I did remember that back when we did our two thousand six town plan.
Conference plan?
Yeah, and this may have been around the time that we were working with that lady. I can't recall, my memory did not serve me like that. But I do recall us having more stringent building codes and guidelines because we did want to preserve the look of the town. But I'm thinking, um, I'm thinking at that time that we were trying to also get the town considered in the historic registry also, and there were multiple reasons for us wanting to do that. Y'all help me, 'cause I, I can't say for sure. So, around that timeframe, if we're gonna spend the money that we did on a comprehensive plan for the town and wanting to say, you know, advanced auto parts can't come in here and put up their red and yellow sign, eliminated across from, you know, the corner shop there would be horrific. And, and I saw, I think we tried to do all this conjunction together. In the timeframe is what I'm thinking, as far as getting it considered historic. I just remember us comparing ourselves to other towns, you know, to Newman and so forth, and specifically having that lady come to several of our meetings, talking about having us on the national register. And it almost even seems like at that time that they were offering tax credits to building owners at that time if they were going to be making any improvements. And I don't remember some limit, it seemed like a hundred thousand dollars to be able to do tax deduction. And I know this is how we get off the whole agenda of sewer and bathroom, but we are discussing altering a historic building, right? So, historic, we had this visual when it looks historic, but is it actually by definition historic is what I'm trying to say.
And, and that, according to Georgia Code and wherever I read it a minute ago, that's, that's up to you. And, and within the document I just provided you, two hundred, two thousand six comprehensive plan, the town's already designated that.
Designated the historic overlay district, but not a building specific.
How do you, Sharksburg preserves and builds on its historic character, maintaining a small town feel growing. Uh, let's see. You got historic district, historic downtown. And in the historic district, the integrity of historic structures is preserved through specific historic regulations incorporated in the zoning ordinance of Sharksburg provided September eighteen thousand five. Is that y'all?
Right, but the fact that a building is designated historic does not take away from the fact that it has to meet the codes, right?
Sit down. You understand why we need the term, Donna? I mean, we're, we're just, we're split.
No, that was pretty clear, what David just said.
You got everything right? I hope so. Um, I mean, it's, yeah, it's very clear, very clear to me. I just, yeah, what, what do you, what do you do when you have different situations where it's technically infeasible or technically impossible to comply with codes?
Ask for an engineer. And then, and then. You design whatever it will take to keep it safe.
If, when they're having a financial burden or hardship on the owner?
Money doesn't come into any aspect of the code.
Sure, sure it does.
These are just the minimum standards, so if you wanna go above the minimum standards, yeah, I guess it would.
And the Georgia, the Georgia Code right here, which is, which is an adaptation of the International Building Codes, correct? Says right here, compliance nonsense, where practical, continue use of existing buildings and structures without overly restricted financial burdens on owners or occupants.
Define that.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm not, I'm, I'm not the code official here. I'm not code.
I don't know, I don't know what your overly restricted financial burden is, so define that for me.
Okay. According to.
I mean, a hundred dollars might restrict me.
These, these are properties, in question.
Okay.
All right. How is it that I, how is it that I am going to, how, how do I make that? How do I make, how do I make this work where? How do I, how do I make a piece of property?
Sit down with that. I'll take it.
Okay? Are, for instance.
Are you asking me for a solution? Or are you asking me for advice?
I'm asking you to reference the code and tell me, or tell the city what they need to do, all right? Building one, or parcel one, lot size is twenty-five by one oh five, that's twenty-six hundred and twenty-five square feet. The building that occupies that is eighteen by sixty-five, is eleven hundred and seventy square feet, okay? That leaves you about fourteen hundred and fifty-five square feet to put septic system, drain fields, and everything to accommodate that building with a, with a toilet and bathroom facility.
Put in a central, put in a central sewer facility.
Okay, so where, where am I gonna put that on, on parcel number one?
Well, wait a minute, let me ask you that, because I invited, I got a septic tank man out here to, right here it is. This is, the estimate is to the cost, and what he was going to do, the number of feet. All that you are going to be required in building number one, to answer your question, is to come out the back of it and run it. All those buildings will be connected to one septic tank, which is fifteen hundred gallons. County has already approved it, and so you don't have to have a septic tank for each building.
How can you, as a city or a building official, make recommendations and make, interpret law ordinances and zoning requirements and enforce those on me, on individual properties? Just because I have the luxury of having other property, that's irrelevant. You have, you have to, you have to make zoning and ordinances on each individual property. What, what if I sold, what if I sold those six properties? What would, what would the next, what would the next owner do?
Same thing, they gotta comply.
Okay, how do they comply? That's my point. How do you comply? How do you comply with these six properties?
To give them the same alternatives that you have been offering.
And, and those are what?
I told you, put in a central facility, or you can put.
Where are you gonna put, where are you gonna put it in?
It's your property. I can't tell you where to put it in.
Yes, you are. You, you tell.
No, I'm telling you what the minimum facilities have to be. You design it. I'll tell you if it meets the code. How about that?
Joe, I have a commercial piece of property myself, and that I bought back in two thousand and one. And unfortunately, when I bought it, it went in septic tank failure. And the county, Hollywood County, was refusing to give me a certificate of access to that open space building.
Because it didn't have a central?
Because it was not acceptable as far as, they said the septic was failed, they would not approve. Health department, everything, environmental health, I went through everything. I had to dig up six parking lots and remove that portion of my parking lot. Have an environmental guy come out to find out if the land under that asphalt hurt. Spend thirty thousand dollars on having the septic run under the existing parking lot, new drain fields. And then, because I removed six parking spots, I had to expand my parking lot on the other side. Overall, it cost me about sixty thousand dollars. I didn't have that. I was trying to open a new business. They didn't care if I didn't have the money. I had to do this in order to get the building opened. And so, I had to make other arrangements to make it happen. I'm in, I have been in your shoes. I understand and know, but that's what the county did.
What, what?
I had to remove parking lots.
What is the, what is the town government here to do in general, day in, day out? What, 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 what do you?
To help people.
To help people, okay. Okay, what about property owners?
Those are such a problem.
Okay, all right. Your, you know, your zoning ordinances and your building codes, and all of them, they start off with the legal, legal mumbo jumbo of, you know, whereas this and all, you know, the zoning procedures law on purposes promoting the health, safety, convenience, order, prosper in general welfare of the municipality, promoting desirable living conditions, sustain stability of neighborhoods, protecting property against blight and depreciation. Um, securing economic, or securing economy and government expenditures, lessening congested streets, facilitating the adequate provision of transportation and water. You have sewage in here, which is not here, but it, it's in your, it's in your zoning ordinance adopted October second, two thousand six. Schools, parks, and other, other public requirements, protecting the value of existing properties. Uh, let's see. Provision, um, it, it states, you know, protecting the value of existing properties, conserve the value of the town's economy, encourage the most appropriate use of land and structures. I don't, I don't see, I don't see this happening. I don't see this, I don't see this being part of what you're doing, you know, in, in my case.
I think exactly, what you read is exactly what we're trying to do.
I don't see it.
Well, you might ought to read it again because it's.
I've read it many times, but I, I, and the reading's not gonna make it out. You guys are gonna make it out. I sat here the last meeting, it was in December, and y'all brought up the fact that a resident on Sunset Drive said, hey, I got a dark corner. I want, I want street light. Okay? We're not Chicago, we're not New York, we don't have rampant crime, so what is the purpose of the town of Sharksburg providing that street light for that one? One resident?
It was for the safety of the children in my neighborhood, and there's about twelve of them.
That was never brought up?
Yes, it was.
No, it was not. We can go back, we can go back. I got, I got.
It may not have been in that meeting, but I had brought that same issue up prior to. That's why Wendell asked, how did my son feel about the lightning up? Because my son was actually ran off the road by a van. I'm on a one-way road, not a two-way. So, there's very small amount of roadway, and a van came around when he was riding his bike, and he went off into the ditch. And it's dark, and there are kids that have to walk to the bus stop, and this is an issue that we have been talking about for years. I even had the bus stop picking children up on Highway fifty-four because of it being dark in the mornings and people cannot see those kids cross those roads. And I made the bus, or I asked for the bus to start coming down our Williams Circle. We have about eleven or twelve children that go to school in that whole vicinity of Williams Circle and Sunset. And they all meet down at Williams Circle for the safety of those kids boarding that bus. So, they do have to walk down that road, and it is a one-way road.
With, with all due respect, I mean, that was, none of that was talked about, and it was, it was a, it was a property owner or a resident?
It was me.
Did ask, no, it was somebody else. Did, you said, hey, can y'all look at each other and say, we're gonna do that?
Well, he had, there was in addition to me asking for it, the, the resident on one hundred Sunset. And the reason why I brought it up is because I don't want it to look like if I ask, because I'm on council, trying to get it done just for me, that there was a complaint from my neighbor on one hundred Sunset about it being dark in that road. But, I mean, Polly knows, she's heard me talk about it before because she's been to a lot of the meetings. But that was mostly a concern purely about children's safety and walking on that one-way street.
Right, well, now, I apologize, you know, to be insensitive in that regard, but that was, I did not know that, no. You know, I didn't have that.
And they ride their bikes down the alleys.
Well, I mean, I think we're pretty much about where we were three years ago. One other question for you guys. Why January one, two thousand and twelve, was all of a sudden this such an issue? You know, what changed to make it where our properties were? You know, what changed to make it where our properties were totally in, in wrong? And, and if somebody was gonna go to jail, or somebody was gonna get fined, or somebody was gonna get harmed, or not be in a safe environment? Where, where is that, how is that? How'd that happen?
First off, it has to occur at some point. The fact that we didn't do it ten years ago doesn't mean that we don't need to do it now. Now, we have been asking Mr. Bridges for years and years, talking to him about it, talking to him about it. And I probably didn't choose to do it. So at some point, for the safety and well-being of the citizens, and to keep our, one of the main things that, that is being overlooked here is the fact that those buildings would stay rented for two, three months, I mentioned this to him before, so listen again.
This has nothing to do with the city, this, this is, this is, I could run them out and sell jelly beans if I wanted to.
Right, but we want, we want, as a city, we want those buildings to remain occupied. And the only way we can do that is to...
Why isn't it your job to do that? Why, why do you take, why do you take, if you take that much effort and put it into providing bathrooms for the, the constituents and for the property, uh, for the property owners, you'd get the same result, you realize that, right?
No, no, we, it's not our responsibility to put in the bathrooms to keep them occupied.
Well, then don't worry about what goes in there, if you, if it's not your, if you're not, you're not taking responsibility, you want, you want this to happen, so you're gonna take the responsibility and you're gonna put these ordinances in, and that's gonna force us to do something.
If it's going to encourage you to do something so that you could open them, just keep them open. I have right here a, from Mr. Bridges, Mr. Bridges, the rental of all of it, he gave it to me. Now I can't go back, but anyway, um, if, in the long run, it would be to your advantage as the owner to do it, and that's our opinion. But regardless of that, we still got to go back to the code. Not only that, do you want to bring this up?
Yeah, it's long.
All right, uh, I'm gonna have Donna read some, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna read it, uh, I've read it enough, but I want her to read this. This is in reference to business licenses.
Uh, yeah, this is in our occupational tax ordinance, it was something that, um, it started with, uh, January first, two thousand and twelve. It's for the year two thousand and twelve. Prior to the issuance of a business registration, all businesses with a location or office within the town limits shall pass an inspection performed by the town clerk or designated to ensure the premises and businesses are in compliance with all laws of the state of Georgia, town ordinances, town zoning regulations, town heating, electrical, building codes, and County County Health Code. And, and for the years after that, all new businesses have not, which have not previously maintained a business registration with the town and which maintain a location or office within the town limits in any current businesses, which wishes to relocate to a new location, then the town shall pass an inspection performed by the town clerk or designated to ensure the premises and businesses are in compliance with all laws of the state of Georgia, town ordinances, town zoning regulations, town heating, electrical, building codes, and County County Health Code. Uh, in the event that any business shall fail an inspection, the town clerk or designated shall provide the applicant a conditional business registration specified action needed and to pass inspection. Town clerk or designated shall re-inspect all businesses under a conditional business registration within sixty days for issuance of conditional business registration.
Thank you, thank you, Paula. Does anyone have any questions, statement, reference to what we just read? Mr. Bridges, floor of charge, when you, uh...
No, I think that applies, I mean, I'm not sure if we're applying anything.
It applies, it applies, if, if, is for all businesses, therefore.
So what, um, so that's, what, what is that, is that answering a, a question or a problem, or solving a problem? I don't, I don't see anything here.
It's just making it that they have to be compliant to get a business license.
Shut up, is that? I mean, what did you guys, uh, did you guys reach out to Warm Springs or anything and talk to them about how they saw they have, you know?
Don't make any difference what Warm Springs does. It does not, it does not affect, uh, I mean, I have your notes here from the lady that sent you the, uh, Warm Springs. Yeah, and in that, she stated to you, it says, but unless your county or local government has passed a code making that a requirement that all businesses provide restrooms to the public, there is nothing in the state code that mandates public restrooms for businesses to have food. That is not true. It is in the state code, we just read, but say that's not. It also says that we have the right to believe the ordinances. She sent that to you in, in Florida, huh?
I certainly did.
Yes, sir.
I thought, thought, you know, maybe you could sort of see how they are able to do that, are they, are they illegal in what they're doing? Or are they out of bounds, or are they just skirting the law, or are they running them up in Warm Springs? And it's just a Wild West shooting up town, or what is it?
Answer the question, tell you stated to you what.
You, you stated earlier that Georgia is a homegrown state. Do I need to go further?
No, but that, you know, that's, that's where, some point in time, there has to be another level of oversight here. You can't just keep quoting that, you know, and using that to hide under, and...
I, I don't think I'm hiding, I'm sitting right out here in the middle of the room. I think I'm telling you exactly what it states. And I don't think the, the town here is hiding, they're, they're still here. You know, a law is a law regardless.
That's right.
You know, and, and if you're speeding, you're speeding.
But you know what? You know, speed limits change, don't they? Same road, same, same road's changing.
And they post them, where they change, don't they?
But you, but, but is it, is it to your understanding that existing structures, you cannot overly burden and overly require?
I don't think I am overly burdening you, and I don't think I'm overly requiring you to make, to make adjustments into your buildings or make a correction in a facility to accommodate the public.
I can't, the, I can't physically do that on these properties, I've shown you the square footage of these individual properties. That it is, I had the, had the County County Environmental Health Director come out here, and I said, look at these buildings individually, okay? Can I put a septic tank and bathroom in this, is it feasible, is it feasible? Is it, is it possible to do that?
Okay, the same, the same situation was in the town of Brooks. You know where the town of Brooks is?
Uh, thank you.
Have you ever been to the town of Brooks?
Who's the mayor?
I don't know.
Dan Lightfoot?
No, he's gone.
No, he's still there.
Yeah, okay, call him up, ask him what they did to solve their problem.
I did.
What did they do?
They've got, they've got a development that has a septic system, like a community, whatever, like a sewer system, mini sewer system.
Yeah, where is it?
It's in a retail, uh, residential development.
No, sir.
Where is it?
It, it's...
Oh, it...
It's on the recreation field.
That's right, it's in, in the, that's right, that's right, it's a city, it's a city.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a, that's a novel idea that the city would, would do that. They, they would go on their way.
The county that did that.
Okay, well, you know, it's a local jurisdiction or government.
Maybe it was a conjunction thing that they worked out, okay? Because none of the facilities in Brooks had facilities, and they wanted to prosper there. Every one of the facilities is full and occupied right now.
Did each one, each one of the separate owners provide this septic system?
They all tied in and all paid for their part.
Okay. I'll, I'll call Dan myself and, and we'll, I, I, I've already discussed it with him, I don't, I don't know that to be true. So all, so you're telling me all the property owners?
Tied in and paid for that system.
Paid money, paid for that system. Who's, and whose land did they use?
They used the county's land.
Oh, okay, okay, so the county provided some, for, for the, for the, town of Brooks, kind of met up halfway. That's, that's a novel approach. Um, all right, um...
Do you have a suggestion, Dr. Brooks?
Well, sure. Why don't you use some of your land?
To do what, sir?
To put a septic, uh, put a sewer system in here, put a septic system in here, I'll tie them.
Well, you talk about tying over them.
What, what am I talking about doing?
Being inactive, but just put in your heart, is that what I heard you say?
That's what they did in Brooks.
You can't require me, you cannot, you cannot require me to do what you're doing, okay? And somebody beyond this room and beyond the scope of understanding is gonna, is gonna be telling you that sooner or later. So I, I really, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of wasting my time.
Joe, does the post office, is it currently ready?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous, I mean, you guys, you ever heard of inverse condemnation? Have you ever heard of inverse condemnation?
Yes, I did.
Okay, can you explain that to the, to the council?
I'm, I'm not an attorney.
Okay, all right, well, that's why I'm not an attorney. Thank y'all for, I mean, I, I don't want to hang on and say, I, this is going around the circle, and I really don't have time for it. Keith, you have any say in her word, I mean, I was curious.
Well, I've, I've been listening, the only thing that I can get from this is a play on words, historic registry.
Those are y'all's words now?
No, I'm talking about what you said. If we can call it historic, we can get around the bathrooms, but if we call it historic, if we call it historic, you don't want to be the, the demands of the historic registry. And I, I, I want to work with you, and I think that if we could come up with some way to get buy-in from you, not just a tap-on, but however to, to offset these costs, then I think that would be a solution. If we could come up with a tank in an area that per, I think we could all come up with something that would work.
I mean, we talked about developing our park down here. And in the beginning, the park plan didn't have a bathroom, and what did I say? It's gonna fail, didn't I? I said, you cannot expect families and moms to bring their children down here to a park and not have a facility for those, those kids to go to the bathroom at. Then I think Wendell said, well, they can come use this bathroom. And I said, no mom is gonna want to leave their kids down there on the park playing. Will they take one of their kids up here, or send one of their kids up here independently to use the bathroom?
We found out we can't do that anymore.
Regardless, we mentioned it, and I said, there's no sense in building a park if we cannot have individual facilities down there for families to use, right? Otherwise, it will be what? Unsuccessful. I wouldn't go to it, I wouldn't bring my kids to it. It might be on anywhere big and go to the bathroom, you know what I'm saying? So if, that's where I was when I was trying to talk about a piece of property that the town does own, and does want to develop it for the community. No, I don't want, I'm not in it to, to develop it halfway, it needs to be developed where it services the needs and functions of every person that wants to come here to enjoy it. And I don't know possibly if the post office, maybe when they, it becomes vacant, that could become a central place for your people to use the bathroom. I mean, I would, I don't know if that's an option or not, but it seems like it might be a good one. I mean, it's, it's further up on this map. This is the post office, it's further up, it's more direct center to these buildings that he owns. And if that works, and, and him being the owner of this, okay? He could make it where these owners have keys to have this open, the same business hours that these are open. Would that not be viable? And, and I think this post, I think this post office, which is a newer facility than any of the others, meets more of the current regulations as far as American Disability Act and so forth, but I haven't been inside of it, so I, I don't know that, it just appears out there from the outside.
Hope there is inside there, there's two bathrooms in that building. And, but they would have to be brought up to code, which we did. We're suggesting that petition be put across there, so that the tenant in that building would have a key to a door that went into the bathroom. But it would close off and the people in the town, for the stores could come in at the side door up there into that facility and make it compliant.
And even if they didn't do that, the loss of rental income on that one post office will totally make up for any other five or six buildings that are around it or currently not.
You don't, you don't have to keep them renting there, it's not a building, all you have to have is petition back to the bank, allow the public to come in, they didn't have to discuss this.
I mean, would that be, uh, would that be something that you could think about?
That's, like Clay said, that, that's, that's an option. And then, then it has to be looked at upon, what's the, what is this fellow over here gonna require me to do?
I mean, I'm assuming that...
I've al, I've already told you what you require, you know?
That seems like the easiest, best thing, to be honest, to be honest.
If this got a register, he could do the same thing.
What else?
There's one on the corner.
Night, night brick store.
Brick store up in the corner, has a bathroom on the lower level, could be retrofitted to, for all of them to use.
You could have doors coming right off Main Street, right off the sidewalk, and petition an area off, so that you didn't lose the occupancy of the rest of the building and make your best room right there.
The only thing I would say is that that's the same bathroom he uses, he may not be keen about letting people do that, I don't know. I'm, I would probably look down on it if I was renting it. But the difference with this is if you are, oh, I, I don't know, I, it seems like it might work.
I, I still go back to the point that my attorney has told me, you cannot make us do certain things to code that are impossible, they're technically infeasible. And you're asking me to put a bathroom in here for every one of those buildings, okay? Provide one. And when you take those six properties individually, you can't, you cannot, it is impossible.
Tell me, tell me why.
Because there is not enough square footage to put a conventional septic system in.
What did I just tell you, Mr. Bridges?
You didn't, you're not listening to me, six properties, six properties.
Yes, sir.
You cannot make judgment and rule in ordinances with the luxury of me having other property, that's irrelevant. That's irrelevant that we own the other property down there. It's irrelevant.
No.
You're acting, so, so you're, you're imposing this ordinance on my vacant land too?
No.
Because I would have to utilize that vacant land to satisfy the requirements of your ordinance and what you're, what you're holding me to. Yes, that's exactly what you're doing. How can you, how can you, how can you make me put, or how can you put a septic system for each one of those buildings?
You don't have to, I told you that. One septic tank will take care of it.
Okay, where am I gonna put one septic tank, where am I gonna put one septic tank on those six properties? I, I just gave you, I gave you the overview topo.
Right.
Gave you the dimensions, I get, and that, if I called the dimensions, I apologize.
It makes it take anything to do with it, because I'm talking about putting your lot here, do you know where the tank is in back of the store, where you, the propane tank?
Uh, which one?
On the last building, before you get to the vacant lot between there and what the old Papa Juju's. Right, there is a propane tank there, that can easily be moved around the corner. The septic tank will fit right there, I've got to look at it and...
That's a vacant property, it's separate of the building.
No, 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 it is a part of that property right there.
Why, why don't you look and, and correct yourself?
I did, I went over there, we got it.
These are my properties, I think I know.
Okay, I'm just telling you there's room to do it.
It's not, it's not possible. I've had, I've had the county septic tank guy come out here and tell me, that I, and it's, it's in there, what he told me, you cannot do it.
Yeah, well, we tried...
So you're gonna hold me to an ordinance that, that it's impossible for me to comply?
No.
And that's where inverse condemnation comes in.
We just gave you...
And I would advise you, well, I, I, you know, you do what you want, but each and every one of you probably need to understand what that means. Because everybody's making judgments, everybody in this room, right here on these tables, they're, y'all are responsible for what, what's happened, okay? Talk to your attorney, see what he says, and we'll talk to you.
Let me ask this question, if, say, he only owned one piece of property, the number one up there on the corner, that vacant property and, or, for the, um, would that change anything?
How?
As a function, that you need to have a bathroom for the facility, if it's already got a bathroom, then you're that much ahead of it.
So when that building was constructed, it was constructed in...
It was, no, it was constructed during the time when there was no bathroom.
Nineteen hundred.
Everybody went to the outhouse.
So, so now, a hundred years later, how do you, how do you, how do you account for that?
You make accommodations. And like I said, you need to search other avenues to accommodate all of those facilities. You own those facilities, like you said.
That's right.
And it's your responsibility, not the city's, to come up with a solution to your issues.
We didn't have any issues until we started zoning and doing all these ordinances. We didn't have issues. Probably not. Clay, I mean, some of the bills we own together, and then some of y'all had before we have them, and y'all rented them out. We didn't have issues.
But you have one of those.
Yeah.
And he needs to find a solution.
And the people responsible for the issues are right.
Is assist you in finding a solution.
I think, you know, what you're, what you're doing to me is not fair.
Well, it's not fair. You can't put them on. You have to take ownership, just as I did on my own commercial property.
Exactly right. You have to take ownership.
I did take ownership, and I'm...
And when you raise your hand yay, or your nay, or second, that's taking ownership.
But you've got to be able to take some accountability, too.
Well, if that's not for you, for me to decide at this point, it'll be for some other people to decide later. I mean, if y'all got any other questions for me, fine. I don't know if the public has any comments, you know?
I would like to comment.
Sir?
I would like to comment.
Why can they not comment? I thought that was the whole thing. Y'all, y'all said they had a work session. And I said, "That's great." And I said, "Hey, can I come?" And they go, "Certainly." Donna said, "Certainly. The public's invited."
They invited. This is a work session. A work session is for the council and invited guests that contain to the issue at hand.
Oh, okay, yeah. I, that's, you know, I remember. Well, I don't have any other, I don't have any other solutions. I mean, I got plenty of other comments, but you're not gonna like them, so, um...
We're willing to hear them, you know?
You guys are way out of bounds. Way out of bounds. You're using an occupational tax in a regulatory, uh, way, which that's illegal according to the Constitution, okay? You got all kinds of other issues, but, you know, that's, I'm wasting my breath because you don't, we don't have a third party here that can say, "This guy's a point. You have a point. This is where, this is where you think it is. This is where he thinks it is. But let's go back to research and I can, I can pull up law. I can pull up stuff that's even over your head."
I'm not a lawyer, and I don't practice fee one. But if, mister, if, if the council wants their attorney here, then so be it. You're some stuff.
Um, well, I mean, I, you know, unless y'all got any other suggestions or you wanna work on stuff, I really don't have time for this. This is not productive. I mean, you guys have been working against...
I'd like to, Joe, that we're taking of our time too for the citizens at this time. We're not here on a Saturday just for our own enjoyment. We're here to try to work out something with you. And apparently, that's not working real well. But don't talk about you wasting your time. We're wasting our time, apparently, also.
We're wasting a lot of this time.
Right, now, you can...
Well, I understand that any of us are wasting any of our time. I think the city's got it. That's why we want her to come to a resolution. I think that all of us have participated and tried to mention that, so I'm not here wasting my time.
You've got, you've got some alternatives that you can do, just as she did with her business. You can do them and make it viable. You'll make it happen.
If I owned the one corner store up there, wooden store, that's all I own. Two years ago, I rented it out. Then all of a sudden, January one, two thousand twelve, y'all tell me you can't do it. How am I to comply with what you've enforced on me? How? You tell me. I just, I mean, it's a simple question.
I mean, I can tell you how I had to. I had to hire an engineer.
You had, you had adequate property within what you had to do what you...
I had to dig up parking lot. I had to excavate actual parking lot.
So I, I guess I'm just tearing out a part of my building.
I did, they told me to do it.
Enough to, okay, well, right here, here's the building code inspector. I already had the County County Environmental Health tell me it's physically, technically feasible.
They told me that too, and I couldn't just lose the investment I put in. The health department said, "You have a piece of property that will never, you'll never own." And I went and hired an engineer, and my engineers and studies, that if you sell those properties, commercial properties, that you're gonna have to dig up your parking lot. And the county said, "If you dig up that parking lot, you're gonna have to add on to be in compliance." So I had to add on a parking. It cost me a lot of money.
But you had the property, you had, within what you had, you could make it possible.
I would have never bought that property if I knew that's what I had to do. I would have never done that.
Well...
I think digging up a prominent asphalt parking lot, that, to me, is considered kind of like a permanent structure. I would have never considered buying that property if I knew I had to do that.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I, you kind, you kind of, you know, you got some apples and oranges we're comparing here, but I still go back to the fact that this, this property is unique. It was built nineteen hundred, nineteen forty, whatever it was. It was in compliance then. And it was so for the remaining seventy years, you know? But now, all of a sudden, you, you know, this is such a crisis that a bathroom has to be in there. It is such that health and sanitary issues are that much of a crisis that you're gonna dedicate all this time to enforcing that only?
I don't agree with you on everything. You're not being singled out. Anybody else that comes in has got to comply too.
You've rendered my property useless. You understand that?
You have rendered it.
How, how, what have I done?
Not put bathrooms in.
And how, and...
Not comply to the regulation.
That you, that you adopted in turn. This gets back to interpretation, is basically what it is. There are ways that we can work this out. And that's where we're gonna have to get somebody with some more, with some oversight to, to open your eyes and allow you to understand. Within the law, you can still, you can still be good. You're not gonna go to jail for not allowing me to have a bathroom in there. But you, that's well within the law. I assure you. And there'll be somebody that will, that will, you know, make you understand that. Um, I don't know. I'm, uh, I do appreciate y'all coming out, though. I mean, I, you know, I was hoping for a little bit better, but, um... I mean, I provided...
What were you hoping for, please?
I was hoping that we'd be able to use the rec center and the library to comply with your codes and ordinances so I could open up those buildings. I got people waiting to come in there. I got people that are legitimate anti-businesses, you know, and it's, you're losing tax revenue. I'm losing revenue. I mean, all I can do is go to the county and say, "Hey, I want, you know, I want it to be reappraised because this is the net value of it now. That's gonna lower y'all's taxes. It's gonna lower the county's revenue." You know, it's not a lot, but you know what? It's, you know, I'm not giving you tax money that's not deserved.
Anything else to come, what committee? About this, about this issue. There's solid on there, Jim. Anything else, Mr. Bridges?
Nothing.
We should come in.
I do, I do, I did talk to Donna. I do wanna see some flacks of the zoning engineering plans on that. If we're, if we're done, Laura, thank you. Wait for me, though.
Anything else? Call me if you're ready.